Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council meeting for Tuesday, October 1st, 2019. If you would please rise and join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's call the roll.
Councilmember Guskowiak.
Here.
Councilmember Kicker.
Here.
Councilmember Demmer.
Here.
Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Wells.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here.
Thank you. First item on our agenda then is to adopt this evening's agenda.
So move.
Second. Motion by Demmer, second by Geisler. Any adjustments or corrections? Discussion, hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And the agenda is adopted. And item one, under Proclamations and Presentations, is the Fire Prevention Week proclamation. And, let's see, I'll read the proclamation first because we might cover everything. No, we don't. Alright. Alright. Whereas, the city of Coon Rapids is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting Coon Rapids, and whereas, fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire, and whereas, home fires killed 2,630 people in the United States in 2017, according to the National Fire Protection Association, and fire departments in the United States responded to 357,000 home fires, and whereas, when the smoke alarm sounds, Coon Rapids residents may have less than two minutes to escape to safety, and whereas, Coon Rapids residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan by drawing a map and practicing fire drills with all family members are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire, and whereas, Coon Rapids residents in a real emergency should get low and go under the smoke to get out quickly, residents should get out and stay out, never going back inside for people, pets, or things, and whereas, Coon Rapids residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take action to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes, and whereas, the 2019 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Not Every Hero Wears a Cape, Plan and Practice Your Escape," effectively serves to remind us that we need to take personal steps to increase our safety from fire. Therefore, I, Jerry Cook, Mayor of Coon Rapids, on behalf of the Coon Rapids City Council, do hereby proclaim October 6th through 12th, 2019, as Fire Prevention Week throughout this city, and I urge all the people of Coon Rapids to support the many public safety activities and efforts of Coon Rapids Fire and Emergency Services during Fire Prevention Week 2019, proclaimed this first day of October, 2019. Chief, we got a lot of stuff going on too, don't we, in October?
Yes. Fire Prevention Week, of course, to us is a very important week, starting next Monday. We get out to all the schools and visit all the K-5 students and talk about fire prevention and fire safety education, and then at the end of that, on Saturday, the 12th, from 10 to 12, we do an open house at all three of our fire stations, and we invite the public to come out. We got a lot of stuff going on, and I will briefly tell you what we have going on at each station. Again, it's October 12th, Saturday, from 10 to 12. Station one on Egress, we have vehicle extrication, we'll have a DJ, we'll have a squad car, and if available, there'll be a line ambulance. At Station two on 121st Avenue, we'll have Conexus doing a power line safety demo, a rope rescue demo with our specialized rescue people, and again, an ambulance if available. And Station three up on Crooked Lake, there'll be a MinDOT rollover simulator, live stove fire demo, the bouncy house, a police K-9 demo, the LifeLink helicopter if available, and an Alina ambulance. So it's a real busy week for us, and we invite the public to come to the fire station again on October 12th. All three stations, 10 to 12. Thank you.
And will there be cookies?
There'll be a few. There'll be a few.
Okay. Get there early. But get there early.
No, if you go for the oatmeal raisins, they're always there at the end. It works for me.
The only issue we have is, I wouldn't want to mention any names, but at our fire station two, one of our firefighters, Smith, but I wouldn't want to mention any names. He's been known to eat a few cookies or two, so I don't know about Station two, but the rest will have them available.
Alright, very good. Chief, do they, the presentations that your firefighters do in the schools are just tremendous. And the only opportunity we have is if we have students there to go and visit them that day, I believe. Is there any other way to see the dance?
Actually, it's a video this year, so yes, we could make arrangements.
Oh, it's a video?
It's a video. They did a video, CTN helped us out with that, so if somebody wants to see it, we can provide it.
Oh, alright, okay. Well, I would hope CTN will play it, and we can find it on the internet, so, alright. Thanks, Chief. Item two this evening is to present citizen life-saving awards, and apparently the police department would like to present six separate awards to citizens who stepped up in critical moments. So whoever's gonna take over, you can take over. Captain Hall, you want to cover this? You want to take this one?
It's not true.
Alright. Officer Platts, welcome.
Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council, thank you for having us. We're here, you may have noticed, we have a slightly rambunctious two-year-old in the house today, and there's a good reason why. We're here to celebrate the life of this slightly rambunctious two-year-old that we almost lost back on August 7th. Because of the actions of some pretty remarkable rescuers, young Declan here, my buddy, is here with us today and here to personally thank the rescuers. So I'll read the details of the case, and then we'll get into the fun stuff. On August 7th, 2019, at about 9:27 a.m., officers, firefighters, and paramedics were dispatched to the wave pool at Bunker Hills Park on report of a child drowning with CPR being performed. When officers arrived, they found the victim, a two-year-old boy named Declan Hanson, out of the water, conscious and breathing. Officers learned that the mother lost track of her son at the kids' pool for less than a minute or two. She immediately requested staff assistance in locating the child, and staff began clearing the pool. Simultaneously, a park patron, Bonnie Ableyn, decided to check the closed water slide area for the child. She found him floating, face down in the water, near the bottom of the water slide. She pulled him from the water, found him unresponsive, not breathing, and blue in color. She screamed for help, ran towards lifeguards with the child in her arms. Lifeguards immediately began life-saving efforts, including chest compressions, airway maintenance, and ventilations. After about 60 chest compressions and four ventilations, the combined efforts of the rescuers revived the child. When officers arrived, the victim was alert and crying. Alert and crying. I was, I was less than a mile away from this when it came out, and I couldn't get there fast enough. It felt like it took me two hours to get there, and I had a sense, just an overwhelming sense of dread going to this. Getting there to see him crying was, without question, the greatest sound I've ever heard in my life. That's an aside, that wasn't written.
No, but it was worth noting.
The child was transported to Children's Hospital in Minneapolis, where doctors thankfully announced that he suffered no injuries or no neurological deficits, and would be just fine, thanks to the life-saving efforts of his rescuers. If not for the immediate action of all involved, including the quick thinking by Bonnie Ableyn, the life-saving efforts of lifeguards Allison Nos, Lauralyn Robertstead, Josephine Minart, Corinne Jacobson, and Andrew Belter, there would have been very, there could have been a very different outcome. All involved clearly helped to save the life of another person, thereby earning their citizen awards of merit. I just want to say, our rescuers are here in the front. I've been doing this job a long time, and I want to say that what you guys did that day was your job. You did your job. But the circumstances of what you did your job under and how you performed with a two-year-old, that's the most stressful thing imaginable. I want to say that, thank you for your training, but thank you for listening to your training, and thank you for believing in your training, and most importantly, thank you for acting. This is a time where a lot of people will shut down, where the fear will paralyze them, and they will not what to do, know what to do. You guys overcame that fear, and you saved this young boy's life, so you have earned your awards. Bonnie, you holding up okay over there? Because your first, your first line.
I would like to, I would like to offer a moment for Declan's family to maybe say a few words. Would you like to come on up?
Thank you. Thank you for having us here tonight, and it's just so wonderful to see you all and to be able to say thank you in person, and be able to, you know, show you, you, you know, you saved our whole family, because I don't know what we would have done had the circumstances been different that day. So thank you. Thank you for, Bonnie, for going and looking. Bonnie, I think about you every day and wonder, so thankful for you. And, you know, all for you, five with Josie, you know, when you were handed, basically, an unliving child, you did exactly what you were supposed to and brought him back to life, and we are so thankful for that. And we're so thankful for meeting the community of St. Paul Fire, or, excuse me, Coon Rapids Fire, Coon Rapids Police, Alina, everything like that, that you really have an amazing community and rescuers here that have been so wonderful to us. So, thank you for that.
Okay. One of the reasons that we do this is to really to give the family an opportunity to thank the rescuers, but also, just as important for the rescuers to see the results of what they did. I know all of you in your mind have this traumatic thing, and it'll never be erased from your mind that day, but we want to provide you guys this opportunity, maybe start putting some really good pictures in your mind of young Declan instead of that scary one. So with that, we'd like to hand out your awards. Each of you are going to get a gold coin. It's a lifesaver coin. With any luck, Declan will give you that coin himself. If not, yep, if not, yes, she's got M&amp;M's, so, but let's, so we'll get started. We're gonna start with Bonnie. Bonnie was the one who took it upon herself, who took the initiative to go out and look for Declan. When everyone was looking in the child's pool, Bonnie decided to look. When everyone's eyes were looking left, she looked right, and she's the one who found Bonnie, or found Declan. Without her, who knows what would have happened, because it would have been a lot longer before we found him. So Bonnie, could you please step on up? Mr. Mayor, if you wouldn't mind helping out. So this is Bonnie's Citizens Award of Merit. Don't laugh at me. I'm old. This is for, this is Bonnie's Citizens Award of Merit, awarded for spotting and acting quickly to pull an unresponsive two-year-old male from the water at the wave pool on August 7th, 2019. Your actions clearly helped save a life of another, and thereby, you earned the Citizens' Award of Merit. Oh, Declan. Declan, buddy. Go give it to Bonnie.
I did an M&amp;M first.
We can actually have you stand up here. We're gonna have everybody eventually lined up in the front here, and then we'll have the council stand up behind you when we're ready to do a picture. How's that?
Okay, next we'll have Allison, please, please come up to Mr. Mayor. The rest of these are the same, so we can just read them once and save the council some time. How's that sound? This is awarded in recognition of your quick action to help a victim of a near-drowning accident at the wave pool on August 7th, 2019, by providing life-saving CPR on an unresponsive two-year-old male, or two-year-old male child who was pulled from the pool of water. Your actions clearly helped save a life of another, and therefore, you earn the Citizens' Award of Merit. Declan, Declan. Andrew Belter? Andrew Belter, Mr. Mayor? Declan, you ready, buddy?
Hey, Declan.
Declan.
Oh wow, you didn't even need an M&amp;M to come. Oh, now you need an M&amp;M?
It's like trying to get you to do anything.
Well, I like peanut, I like peanut M&amp;Ms, that's just regular. Lauralyn Robertstead? Am I saying that right? Probably not. Lauren? Declan.
On your heart.
Go.
Yep.
Go. Karen Jacobson? Declan. And unfortunately, Josie isn't able to make it today. She's a college student and has class tonight, as are all of our fine young rescuers, except for Bonnie. She's the professor. So we will get, we will get hers to her. So this is it. These are your heroes. I'd also like to take a moment to recognize the firefighters and the Alina medic that were at the scene there too. This was a great call for us. We didn't have anything to do other than celebrate this, this, this kid. So this is all on you, but thank you guys, you know, for just in case, right? So.
Can we get a picture with the family and Declan and the council standing behind?
Please. Yes. Thank you, guys. Thank you, Officer Platts. Nicely done. Alright, we'll give everybody a couple minutes to, or a moment. It's really hot in here, isn't it?
It's warm. Yep.
Didn't we pay to fix that a while back? Alright, next item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes from the September 17th meeting.
So move.
Second. Motion by Demmer, second by Kicker, to approve the minutes of September 17th, 2019. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And those minutes are approved. And we have several items on our consent agenda. If you are following along, it's items four through 12. So the first item on our consent agenda, item four, is to approve a Class A on-sale and Sunday liquor license for Broadway Pizza, 3420 129th Avenue. The ownership of Broadway Bar &amp; Pizza has changed to Melissa Lynn Shelley and Tony William Shelley necessitating the application for a Class A on-sale and Sunday liquor license in the new entity's name. The license and investigation fees have been paid. The police department is conducting the background investigation as required by the city's code. A certificate of insurance evidencing liquor liability and workers' compensation coverage has been received. Approval of the license would be conditioned upon a successful background investigation, and Anoka County Environmental Services issuing a food service license. So we're looking to approve issuance of a Class A on-sale and Sunday liquor license to MS Hospitality LLC, doing business as Broadway Bar &amp; Pizza, located at 3420 129th Avenue Northwest, contingent upon the completion of successful background investigations, and Anoka County Environmental Services issuing a food service license. Next item is item five, and that's to approve a therapeutic massage enterprise license for Massage For Health LLC, 299 Coon Rapids Boulevard, Suite 208. Ms. Morales paid the background investigation and license fee for a therapeutic massage enterprise license. She has also provided proof of the required liability insurance, so approval is contingent upon the police department background investigation findings. So with this action, we would be looking to approve the issuance of a therapeutic massage enterprise license to Massage For Health LLC, located at 299 Coon Rapids Boulevard, Suite 208, pending a successful background investigation. Next item on our agenda then is item six, to adopt Resolution 19-93, Delinquent Utilities 2019. According to city code, delinquent utility bills should be certified to Anoka County for collection with real estate taxes. Users have been notified by mail that payments should be made to avoid certification. The amount to be certified to Anoka County is as follows. Utility cost $950,476. Administration fee, $35 per parcel, which is $85,050, for a total of $1,035,526. Do we have a, I suppose we have a different amount tonight? Or that's what we're going with?
No, because the letters are just being sent, Mr. Mayor, but within the next 30 days, we anticipate a significant reduction through people paying.
Okay. Yeah, because it seemed like it was 25% more than any other time, so I thought we must have some payments coming in yet.
Oh, yes.
Alright, so we're looking to adopt Resolution number 19-93, the resolution certifying delinquent utilities to taxes. Item seven, the next item on our consent agenda, is to adopt Resolution 19-94, appointing Tim Peterson to the Historical Commission. Tim Peterson has submitted an application for the Historical Commission and attended the September 19th and the August 15th Historical Commission meetings. After discussion with the applicant at the September 19th meeting, the Historical Commission recommends Mr. Peterson be appointed to the Historical Commission with a term expiring December 31st, 2021. So we're looking, we're looking to adopt Resolution 19-94, appointing Tim Peterson to the Historical Commission with a term expiring December 31st, 2021. Next item on our consent agenda is item eight, adopt Resolution 19-95, appointing William Reichenborn to the Parks and Recreation Commission. Mr. Reichenborn has submitted an application for the Parks and Recreation Commission, and they have recommended he be appointed to the Parks and Recreation Commission with a term expiring December 31st, 2021. So with this, we'll be adopting Resolution 19-95, appointing William Reichenborn to the Parks and Recreation Commission with a term expiring December 31st, 2021. Item nine on our agenda is to adopt Resolution 19-98, accepting the Victim Service Grant from Minnesota Department of Public Safety, Office of Justice. This is a two-year renewal grant. We've had the same grant for the period of October 17, 2000, October of 2017 through September of 2019, and during that time period, we served 1,337 crime victims. So we'll be looking to adopt Resolution 19-98, to accept the Victim Service Grant from Minnesota Department of Public Safety, Office of Justice Programs. The next item is item 10 on this evening's agenda. This will be looking to adopt Resolution 19-96, calling for a public hearing to vacate the utility easement. On June 20th, Red Mill Properties LLC received site plan approval from the Planning Commission for the construction of a 6,100 square foot multi-tenant commercial building proposed on the northeast corner of the Wells Fargo Building, located at 3,200 Main Street. The project requires the relocation of an existing water main pipe currently located within a 20-foot wide drainage and utility easement. So a vacation petition may be initiated by the city council upon adoption of a resolution by a four-fifths majority. So Resolution 1996 calls for a public hearing on November 6th. So we're looking to adopt Resolution 19-96, which calls for a public hearing on November 6th, 2019, for a vacation of a utility easement. And item 11 is the same thing for a different spot. We're looking to adopt Resolution 19-97, calling for a public hearing to vacate utility and water main easement, and this is down at the RMS Company's 8,600 Evergreen Boulevard. They have submitted plans to the city that include expansion of their existing facility located at 8,600 Evergreen Boulevard. The building expansion project requires the relocation of an existing water main pipe currently located within a 20-foot wide drainage and utility easement. The existing drainage and utility easement needs to be vacated, and a new 20-foot wide drainage and utility easement conveyed over the realigned water main pipe. So we're looking to adopt a resolution to start the process. So we are looking to adopt Resolution 19-97, which calls for a public hearing on November 6th, 2019, for vacation of a utility and water main easement. And then item 12 is to approve the joint power, the North Metro Mayors Association Joint Powers Agreement Amendment and Resolution 19-99, authorizing membership to the city of Fridley. The North Metro Mayors Association Board of Directors at the September 18th meeting approved the attached amended and restated joint powers agreement. The changes, as discussed by the operating committee in June, are housekeeping items that bring the document up to date, and add the city of Fridley as a member. So this last action will be to adopt Resolution 19-99, and approval of the 2019 Joint Powers Agreement with the North Metro Mayors Association. Your Honor? Councilmember Kicker?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Kicker, second by Demmer. Any discussion or questions? Councilmember Demmer?
So just a thank you to Tim and Bill for signing up for the commissions, and then, are there any other open spots that people should go on the website and find out about?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Demmer, yes, there's an opening on the Board of Appeal and Adjustment and Appeal, if anybody is interested.
Okay, thank you. And I believe they have a meeting coming up this week on Thursday, in case anybody wanted to see what it is that they do and check it out. That would be right here in these council chambers. Alright, any other discussion? We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the consent agenda is adopted. We are up to item 13, and that's to consider a joint powers agreement with Anoka County for the Hanson Boulevard Reconstruction Project, 17-30. Mr. Hammer, you want me to read the discussion points, or do you want to give us the highlights of this kind of, actually, now old news?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this will be the next segment of Hanson Boulevard from roughly Highway 10 up to Main Street. Includes access management, right and left turn lanes, trail on one side, sidewalk on the other. A couple of, the bigger highlights is adding full right and left turn lanes at every intersection, so you'll always have two through lanes, and actually converting, one, there's dual northbound left turns going into the Gateway Development. We're actually taking one of those to make a single northbound left in and creating another southbound lane to get to Highway 10, to, to increase that to four lanes, and get an additional left turn lane onto Highway 10. So that southbound morning traffic will be alleviated a little bit. This is something that we've been working on for over two years, and we sponsored this with a resolution of support for the federal funds. It's about a four and a half million dollar construction project, and 2.3 of that is federally eligible. So four and a half million dollars worth of construction in the city's cost is about $427,000, and I'll answer any questions you might have with regard to that.
Alright. Council, any questions for Mr. Hammer?
Can you remind me again what we have for access to Alliance Coon Creek Park in that area?
Councilmember Johnson, we have a three-quarter access. So you're allowed to take a southbound left in, you just cannot take a left-hand turn coming out.
Gotcha. Thank you. Got you, thank you.
All right, so anybody want to take this motion?
Your Honor?
Councilmember Demmer?
Move to approve the execution of a joint powers agreement with Anoka County for improvements to Hanson Boulevard, County State Aid Highway 78, from 400 feet south of Northdale Boulevard, CSAH 11, to Main Street, CSAH 14.
I'll second it.
Motion by Demmer, second by Johnson, discussion?
Mayor?
Councilmember Griszkowiak?
Has the Anoka County website been updated with the final design of this roadway? Is that a question maybe for Tim?
I'm sorry, Councilmember Griszkowiak, what was the question?
Oh, I was wondering if the Anoka County website has been updated to show the final design of this roadway.
I guess we can check that quickly, but it would be under their future construction plans. They have it broken into two sections. One is active construction and one is future construction. So what you see here, it would be the layout that's shown, because this is the one that we're proceeding with. And if it's not, I'll certainly ask for them to update it.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Hammer, is this essentially the design that we had at the open house? Because it's actually been a while now since we've had the open houses. But we had an open house on this, actually I think we had more than one. Is this essentially the design that was at the last open house, you think?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we had the first one, and there was a lot of debate. I think Grouse Street was in there, and you know, left turns, and how far do we have to do to get U-turns? And so we added some of these three-quarter access. And so the second one, this was the layout that was shown. I can't remember at that time if we started looking at the numbers, because at that point, we was going to stop at Northdale Boulevard, and we started to look at the functioning of Highway 10 and trying to find that better AM commute flush. So we may have done that left turn swap for southbound, northbound, following that. I just can't recall if that matters.
And that really doesn't impact the housing or access to the residents, so.
Yeah, it just extends a little bit south of Northdale, whereas before it was primarily Northdale to the north.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that motion carries. Item 14, consider purchase of fire rescue, it says trucks, plural, but we're just looking to buy one, correct?
Uno.
Uno, all right. And then, so staff is recommending the purchase of one 2020 Rosenbauer fire engine, utilizing a cooperative purchasing contract with the Houston Galveston Area Council at a base cost of $675,379. And now this is where it gets confusing to me, because it says this will replace a 2009 Pierce Fire Engine, and that the existing truck will be kept as a reserve engine, but the 2009 Rosenbauer Rescue Truck will then be sold for approximately $50,000. So we're talking three different trucks here, right? So we are actually, one is going down the road with the purchase of this one.
No pun intended.
I didn't even recognize it. So certainly not intended. Okay, well, I got nods, so all right, that's the way it is. All right, and they're looking for the order to be placed on Wednesday, October 2nd, with anticipated delivery in October of 2020. Funding for the replacement fire engine has been included in the proposed 2020 city budget. And while the budget will not be approved until December, the city can realize a more timely delivery of the new fire engine by ordering now. Councilmember Demmer?
We totally should have let Declan move this one.
I don't think Declan can.
Oh, fine, all right. Move to authorize the purchase of one replacement fire engine.
Second.
So we got a motion by Demmer, second by multiples. We're going to give it to Geisler. Discussion?
Mayor?
Councilmember Griszkowiak?
I looked in the 2020 preliminary budget. We have $750,000 budgeted for this. This shows a base cost of $675,000. Are we seeing a big savings by ordering early? Is that what this is, or is there going to be additional, something over the base?
Chief Piper?
Counsel, the base is the $675,000. There's $750,000 in the budget. What is not included in here is some of the loose equipment, i.e. the two-way radios, which is probably $30,000 roughly, some of the air packs we need and a few other things. So in other words, we will, I'm comfortable we'll come in within budget, but no, this is not the total cost.
You have to outfit the truck, essentially.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that motion carries.
For $675,000, you get a stripped-down model.
Yeah, right. All right, item 15 is, let's see, to consider planning an introduction of an ordinance regulating self-storage facilities. And this is planning case 19-13. Mr. Harlecker, Mr. Brown, Mr. Feneles, who wants to kind of?
Like a brief presentation, kind of an explanation of what's contained within the ordinance?
Sure.
All right.
Sure.
This was, process started back in the spring. Council held several workshops to discuss this item and give staff some direction as to what they were looking for. And what is being proposed breaks down into really two components. The first one is coming up with a definition of self-storage facility. Currently, the zoning code doesn't define self-storage facilities. So what's being proposed are two different definitions. One is a general definition, which reads, "A facility containing separate individual and private storage spaces of varying sizes, leased or rented on an individual basis for the storage of personal property, where individual renters control and access individual storage spaces via its own access store. Ancillary retail sales of related items such as moving supplies and facility offices may also be included. Such facilities to be used for self-storage only." This would cover the more traditional-style self-storage facilities with access via an exterior garage door. We're also proposing a second definition for the indoor-style facilities. A fully enclosed building that is climate-controlled, containing separate individual and private storage spaces of varying sizes. These are rented on an individual basis for the storage of personal property, where individual renters control and access individual storage spaces. Each unit must be directly accessed from the interior of the building via its own access store. Outdoor access to individual units is prohibited. Then ancillary retail sales, related items, and facility offices may also be included. And such facilities may be used for storage only. So those are the two new definitions that are being proposed. The second component is how these self-storage facilities fit into the different zoning districts. The first one is the general commercial district. Currently, all self-storage facilities are allowed as a conditional use. Outdoor storage is not prohibited. Staff is proposing to amend the code to allow only indoor self-storage facilities in the general commercial district. Outdoor storage would continue to be prohibited. The second area is self-storage facilities in the River Rapids overlay. Under the current code, self-storage facilities are allowed as a conditional use on properties that are zoned general, commercial, or industrial. Accessory outdoor storage is allowed with a conditional use permit on properties that are zoned industrial but not general, commercial. In the River Rapids overlay district, there are an additional five standards that conditional use permits must meet. And for self-storage facilities, in addition to those five, there's two other ones. The first one is that it's not feasible to install a public sidewalk to serve the facility. And second, the facility is screened from view from Coon Rapids Boulevard. What staff's proposing is that to amend the code to allow only indoor self-storage facility with no outdoor storage in both the general, commercial, and industrial districts. Staff is also proposing to eliminate the last two conditions regarding the public sidewalk and screening. And the facilities will still be subject to the standard overlay district CUP standards. And finally, in the industrial district, under the current code, all styles of self-storage facilities are allowed as a permitted use. Accessory outdoor storage is allowed but requires a conditional use permit. And no changes are being proposed for the industrial district.
All right, council, any questions of Mr. Harlecker? All right, this is just an introduction. Does anybody have any comments before we introduce this?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
I'll just, you know, make my comment that I know that this is kind of one piece of the puzzle, and probably the bigger piece. And that I expect that we'll be looking forward to seeing potential design standard and potential sign changes. But this is the bulk of the storage facility just from a land use perspective. And that I think that we've got a few other things that we'll be looking at with regard to design and sign. So that part isn't in here now, but I would expect to see that in the next year.
All right, well, very good. So with that, we will consider planning case 19-13, an ordinance regulating self-storage facilities introduced. Make sure I've got everything there. Yeah, is that everything, Mr. Brody? All right. Next is item 16, consider adoption of the City of Coon Rapids Special Assessment Policy Update. So staff has presented information to the City Council on a potential update to the special assessment policy that was originally adopted in July of 2006. They originally presented the information to council in a work session on July 9th and provided additional information on the same. Earlier this evening in a work session, we've looked at it quite a number of times now. Do you want to just cover the math, or do we want to just? Somebody want to just, what do you want to do?
Mr. Mayor? Council, briefly, I'll just mention that we're going back to the assessment policy that was created back in 1997 when the street reconstruction program began. Since that time, over the past few years, we've increased the standards, basically a thicker asphalt section, which allows more maintenance opportunities for us, as well as changing the seating requirements to sod as part of this. So those improvements have increased costs over time. So we're not proposing to change anything within the policy itself other than kind of a one-time adjustment to kind of reset that baseline of where the 2020 assessments would be. And we're using 2019 costs with regard to real benefit or real cost of the improvements for a typical single-family lot and adjusting everything else in accordance with that. So with that, I'll stand for questions. Otherwise, the proposed 2020 rates are shown there. It's a 3.11% increase over last year's rates, and that accounts for only 10% of the actual costs that it costs us on a construction project. So we estimated it to be about $650 per parcel. We're passing on $65 per parcel, and the remainder would be part of the city's contribution. Now I'll stand for questions.
All right, council? Your Honor? Councilmember Kicker?
I make a motion that the council adopt the attached updated special assessment policy.
Second.
Motion by Kickers, second by Wells, discussion?
Mayor?
Councilmember Griszkowiak?
Just to confirm, we've got increased asphalt. We have seating along the roadway where they're reconstructed. The city is actually picking up 90% of this incremental cost. 10% being passed on equal 3.11% rate increase. Do I have that right?
That is correct, Councilmember Griszkowiak.
Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Demmer?
So I always point out that I'm not a big fan of assessments, and that's probably partially due to the ward that I live in, where the amount you get assessed is multiple times your annual homeowner's tax. And so it can hit people really hard at very surprising times with a fairly large bill. It always strikes me as a situation where you're, there's not much you can do to control it, and you don't know how often you're going to have to pay it. And so it's a tough policy in general. That said, Coon Rapids has among the lowest rates of assessment of any city in the area. And what's happened here that I'm actually a really big fan of is what I didn't like with the old policy was, you know, if you're a city, or if you're a street who they did a bad job building and it wears down faster, you actually have to pay your assessment more often than someone for whom the government did a good job building a good road. This is saying we're going to make the roads more robust. And percentage of that goes down. So from a fairness standpoint, someone who paid last year, someone who pays this year pays a little bit more, but there's a really good chance their road will last longer. So the total amount they pay over 50, 100, 200, 300 years will average out much lower. And so for the person who gets the assessment this year, and it is higher, although by a fairly small amount higher, you are actually getting a much better road than the person who got it last year for not much difference. So while I came into the place like absolutely ready to vote no, I actually think that the city did a good job trying to balance fairness on this with also improving quality, and that's not easy to do. So kudos to trying to hit that balance.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any other discussion?
Your Honor, I just wanted to reiterate.
Oh, Mr. Brody.
About our adjustment to this policy. This is a one-time adjustment. We'll be following our normal policy going forward, which is adjusted based on the.
Construction cost index.
Thank you. And we'll resume that again then, starting in next year.
All right, okay. Hearing no other discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that motion carries. And we are on to item 17, consider Resolution 19-24-8, accepting plans and specifications for the West Water Treatment Plant HVAC improvements and authorized solicitation of bids. Mr. Hammer, anything you want to talk about there?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this item was budgeted in the 2019 program. Now we have a facility maintenance manager on board, so we wanted to make sure we started out on the right foot. And so we've now come back with some final plans and specs. We're looking forward to move forward into the bidding phase, and we'll come back to you when those bids are open and look for an award. So it's a budgeted project, and we're just looking to get it out for bid.
All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution number 19-24-8, accepting plans and specifications for the West Water Treatment Plant HVAC improvements and authorize the solicitation of bids.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Demmer, discussion?
Second.
I'm sorry.
It's me.
What did I say?
Demmer.
I was thinking, Kicker. It just didn't come out what I was thinking. Okay, second by Kicker, all right. Discussion, hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that motion carries. All right, and we are on to the open-mic portion of the meetings. Anybody here to address counsel during open-mic? Public comment? Oh, perfect.
My name's Melissa Shelley.
Oh, well, come up to the ambo, and then give us your name and address. And then you've got three minutes. And then if it's anything that requires a response, then staff will provide that coming up. Okay, go ahead.
My name's Melissa Shelley. I'm here on behalf of MS Hospitality LLC, doing business as Broadway Pizza, here to obtain our on-sale liquor license.
We've already approved it.
Oh, okay. I just wanted to say thank you. I'm excited to be a part of the Coon Rapids community. Thank you very much for your time.
Excellent, well, yeah, all the greatness of success there. Will you be having the buffet lunch?
Yes, absolutely. Monday through Friday from 11:00 to 1:30. Thank you very much for your time. I greatly appreciate it.
Just checking.
Thank you.
Thank you. Not that I have any favorite things there, but. All right, anybody else here to address counsel for open-mic? All right, hearing none. We don't have any reports on previous open mics, and we are on to other business. Anybody have anything for other business? Councilmember Demmer?
I completely missed it last meeting when I should have done it, but I thought, you know, it's reasonable to recognize that Peter Bodley, after 49 years of covering Coon Rapids, has, is not retired, not covering the Coon Rapids Council meetings anymore, but, you know, that's a really long time to be on the Coon Rapids beat, and I'm sure everyone recognizes his name from looking in the paper, and, you know, kudos to him for keeping us honest.
Yep, yep. You always knew Peter was going to be very fair, and that was very much appreciated, and thorough. Often I would read, I would go, oh, that's what we did, huh? Hate to confess that, but... All right, Mr. Stenwell?
Mayor, counsel, I'll just make mention that it was actually brought up earlier in the meeting, but that our first meeting in November gets pushed back one day to November 6th, which is a Wednesday, due to the election that's being held for school board on the 4th, on the 5th, rather. And so state statute precludes us from meeting until that concludes, which would be 8:00 PM. So rather than kind of back things up, we just move it back a day to Wednesday.
And we only have like two precincts voting that night, don't we? I mean, it's, it's, it's pretty small, yeah. We have one contested, I think Hydaman has like two little precincts in Coon Rapids. The other ones are unopposed, but get out there and do what you're going to do. All right. Okay. So I would like to point out that the Coon Rapids Rotary Club has an event coming up Thursday night, and it's their Oktoberfest Sampler. And it's an opportunity to sample brews from eight, I think it's eight different places now, isn't it? They just added Omni, right?
Correct. There are seven breweries, and then one distillery that will be there on Thursday.
Yeah, yeah, it's $40, lots of great food. So it's going to be 6:30 to 9:00 at Bunker Hill's Event Center, and all the information is online. Care to send them anywhere?
You can buy tickets at kendallstc.com. Does that sound right, Grant? That's right. That's the website. Also, if you visit the Coon Rapids Rotary Club page, you can get redirected to more information, if you Google that.
That's this Thursday, October 3rd.
Correct.
Yes, yes. All right. Thank you for indulging us. Other business? Chief Piper?
Mayor, counsel, just a quick update on the Hanson Bridge over the River Tacks. I got a phone call today from Commissioner Schulte, and the opening has now been pushed to the third week of November. And we are currently, our staff along with Anoka County are working on the ribbon cutting, and it'll either be November 18, 19, or 20, but we'll give you more information when we have it.
That's a pretty big bomb to drop. Third week of November now, yikes. All right.
So we're changing holidays from Halloween to Thanksgiving?
Thankful.
Yeah, thankful, thankful it's open.
Yep.
Finally get to my mom's again. All right. Other business to come before counsel?
Do we want to just reiterate for people who maybe missed that it's Fire Prevention Week next week, and that there will be the open houses on the 12th?
Saturday, October 12th. All three fire stations, 10 to 12. Lots of fun displays, and it's absolutely, it's a great time. It really is.
Mayor, counsel, like everything else, we hope the weather holds, but as I read earlier today, we have lots of activities going on, and we hope everybody can get out and enjoy and learn.
Yep, yep. All right. Somebody want to...
With all this rain, I'm not sure you're having to put out that many fires, so it's unbelievable.
Lots of lightning, though.
Yeah, lots of lightning and wind.
Councilmember Demmer?
After the weather report's over, I move to adjourn. Second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Johnson to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.